This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of the town of North Haven.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mike Fried, North Haven's First Selectman, and welcome to our May 6th Board of Selectmen Meeting. I'm joined tonight, as always, by our Second Selectman, Mr. William Piper, and our Third Select Woman, Ms. Sally Buwemi. Welcome, Sally. Welcome, Bill, and welcome, our audience. Okay, we will now stand for our pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We will move to item number three on the agenda, the approval of the minutes of the Board of Selectmen Meeting of April 1st, 2021.
I will make that motion, but first, I just want to make a comment because usually in between the pledge and the approval, we allow comments regarding the agenda, which of course isn't on here because it's public comments. I just want to say one more time, I'm hoping that very soon we will, at these important Board of Selectmen Meetings, make arrangements for folks to be able to call in live for public comment at the end of our meeting. I had mentioned it in January, and you said you were hopeful to get it in place by February. I mentioned getting it in March, so here we are in May. Every two months, I make this plea that other town boards, specifically planning in zoning and the Board of Ed, have call-in live, and so I'm hoping that soon we will have a live public comment at the Board of Selectmen Meeting. So with that said...
Yeah, no, I agree with you.
Okay, and you say that every month?
Yeah, but we're in the process of a phone system conversion here.
Okay.
We have a problem with this phone sometimes where we can't get everyone to effectively be in a queue, so to speak. So this is one of the dilemmas we're faced with here.
Okay.
But it's my goal to get back to that. And then somewhere in the hopefully near future, we have live participation in these meetings with public comment.
Yeah, but I think we have to also... I am very much looking forward to people coming back, but I think we still have to honor the fact that some folks might be hesitant to come back and so have this phone in. I mean, the phone in works pretty well. Like at the public hearing on April 6th, that phone in worked well. But I appreciate you acknowledging that you agree. You've acknowledged every time I said it, but here it is months later. So I just feel like I had to stress the importance of that yet again. So hopefully, we could iron out these kinks with the phone system you're referring to and get the folks here soon by phone and in person contemporaneously. So with that said, and with your comments, I will make a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen Minutes from the meeting of April 1st, 2021.
Okay, thank you, Sally.
Okay.
Here's a second. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, any other discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, item number four is the approval of the minutes of the Special Board of Selectmen Meeting on April 23rd. Is there a motion to accept?
A motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, I just have one slide tonight, ladies and gentlemen. I recently announced a number of new businesses coming into North Haven, both small businesses and large businesses. Next month, I'll have another update in terms of some of the projects that I'm working on that were now coming back out of this pandemic, and new businesses are starting to come in based on discussions I've had with them, projects that we have resurrected that were on hold on the pandemic or from the pandemic. So next month, I'll have a further update. But for tonight, I wanted to talk about three very important things. Our budget, our proposed budget for 2021, 2022 is a no-tax increase budget. Our annual Budget Town Meeting will be in person at the high school on Monday, May 10th. A couple of months ago, I expressed a desire. We had a discussion here at the Board of Selectmen, and I said, "I hope we can get back to a live meeting for the budget presentation," and we're going to be doing that. 7:00 at the North Haven High School Auditorium. We asked that everyone who enters the building wear the masks, and there's enough seats there, ladies and gentlemen, so that when you sit, we will rely on you and leave it up to you to ensure that everyone in the audience is socially distanced. Also, and this ties in to something on the agenda tonight, Mr. Feinberg, this is an email that we've set up. So for those that would prefer not to come, and Sally said, "We're going to be seeing that even when we open up these meetings." There are going to be some, and we understand that may not be as comfortable coming in person. So comments or questions may be emailed in advance for that meeting next week at bos@northhaven-ct.gov. Every question that comes in, I'll be answering on the town side. Patrick will be also on the Board of Ed side, and you will be recognized by name and your question. I will read the question. I will acknowledge the person who wrote the question, and we will be answering the questions. So that is what we're doing then. That's what I wanted to talk about tonight. The budget referendum is Tuesday, May 18th. All voting will be at Mildred Wakely Recreation Center on 7 Linsley Street, across, as you know, from the North Haven Police Department. The voting hours will be 6:00 a.m. in the morning to 8:00 p.m. at night. Tuesday, May 18th, an in-person referendum. And finally, on June 7th, the Conservation Commission is having a very important event, and I'm going to turn it over to Valerie to explain it.
Thank you, Mike. Yes. The Conservation Commission would like us to share with our viewers and our residents that they have purchased and planted three dogwood trees.
So sorry, let me start again. The North Haven Conservation Commission wanted us to share an event that they're having on June 7th. They have purchased and planted three dogwood trees on the North Haven Green, two at the walkway entrance opposite each other, and then one a few steps further on the right before the cemetery entrance. And the purpose of these trees, one of them, is that they would like to honor all of those who have passed and deceased during this COVID pandemic. So they are dedicating one of those dogwood trees to honor those in memoriam that have passed from the pandemic. So they're holding a ceremony on the green on Monday, June 7th, at 5:00 p.m. So they would like to have as many people participate as are able to come and join them. And of course, I'm sure they will be having masks and social distancing. So if you need more information, you can reach out to the Conservation Commission.
That's it. Yeah, I thank the Conservation Commission for that effort. That's great.
They do great work, as do many of the other volunteer commissions, the Garden Club, I can go on and on. So I agree with you, Sally.
Yeah.
And I will be there that night on June 7th. Sally and Bill, you're invited, of course, also.
I'll be there. Dogwood is the state tree, I believe.
Yes, that's right. All right, item number six, correspondence.
Would you be along the same lines, Mike, you should mention about the Memorial Day Parade? Because you won't... we won't meet until after then.
Yeah, that's a good point. Okay, so, and thank you for bringing that up, Bill. So we are going to be moving forward with the Memorial Day Parade this year. And it was, it started out, we weren't sure. So we've been talking to the veterans, and Nick Mastriani at the Legion, and some of the other veterans whom we are in close contact with on a regular basis. Tammy and Valerie have been involved, Tammy in particular, helping the veterans. And what we did was, back in April, we sent out an exploratory letter asking people if they wanted to attend a Memorial Day Parade, if we were going to have it. So right now, I believe we're at about 40% of the total brigades that we would normally have, that would normally march every year. So we were in deep discussions with the veterans. They really wanted to have the parade, even though it would be scaled down, and I support the veterans here in town. So we will have some restrictions. As an example, no vendors marching up and down the street. We are looking at the possibility... I'm not sure what we're going to do with the showmobil yet. We're trying to eliminate as much congregation as possible. We will rely on the residents who come to the green to enter the green with masks and then be as socially distanced as possible. And this parade is May 29th, which is 10 days after May 19th, of which there'll be many restrictions lifted by the state as it relates to COVID-19. So one of the things I say internally here on a regular basis to Valerie and Tammy and our department heads is that I'm trying to balance public safety with bringing back some of the things that are near and dear to the residents. The Memorial Day Parade is an example. We'll be starting the concerts on July 6th outdoors. We're working on a plan there. So by balancing public safety, but by trying to get us back slowly to a sense of normalcy, this is what I'm focused in on right now. So, Bill, thank you for bringing that up. Also, Sally and Bill and our residents, the veterans and I are working on a ceremony on the green prior to the parade, similar to what we've done in the past. Might be a little bit scaled down. I'm going to be reading something from Colonel Raymond Fowler, who wrote a beautiful piece on the Arlington Cemetery. Raymond's having some health issues now, so he may not be in attendance. And it's also come to my attention that there's a 99-year-old WWII veteran in Hampden who was one of the members of the armed forces that freed and liberated people in Czechoslovakia. And we're reaching out to him to see if he'd like to join us, and we would commemorate him and honor him on the green if he is able to make it at 99 and a half years old. So thank you for bringing that up. That's what we're doing at this point.
Yes, I responded to the letter I got that I would be attending. You know how I feel about the veterans and all that. We were able to have a veterans ceremony last November with appropriate social distancing. And I think as far as folks that feel comfortable attending, you know, we're 14 months now into this pandemic. I think people are pretty used to social distancing. And obviously, a family could stay together. They're in the same family. But I think people will be... We can rely on people using their best judgment to space out a bit. So, you know, I'm fully supportive of this. And I agree, you know, we have to carefully, as you say, with that balancing, try to return to normal and to the occasions that folks look forward to. And certainly, everyone looks forward to honoring our veterans. And I'm glad you brought this up, Bill, because I intended to bring up the Memorial Day Parade right before we adjourned to remind folks that, you know, we were going to have it. So I'm going to say now what I was going to say then. I have a special request about this parade. You know, my father always said to me, you know, "You have Veterans' Day, which honors all veterans, and you have Memorial Day, which is a much more solemn day that honors veterans who have fallen on the battlefield." That's a little bit different. And we have that very solemn ceremony at the end of the parade where the Post 76 comes to the monument in front of the town hall. It's a beautiful and solemn ceremony. And it is, you know, my father used to say, you know, "Hot dogs and picnics are great, but don't lose sight about what Memorial Day is really about." And so here is my request, something that has always frustrated me and now marching in the parade quite a few times. I respectfully request that the elected officials in the parade, and there are many, various levels of government, try to refrain from going and politicking and campaigning, and that we march as a unit in solemn acknowledgement of what we're there for, which is to honor fallen veterans, and not get distracted off to the side. And I've done it myself. And I know people desperately always want to talk to you, Mike, or in the past, Mr. Fizzano, or Mr. Yakarino, Mr. Blumenthal, sometimes Congresswoman DeLoro. Everyone wants to talk to, you know, they're so excited. But I used to say to myself, "This isn't..." It didn't feel right to me because it just felt like this is not what the Memorial Day Parade is supposed to be. We are supposed to be representing our town in a dignified way in this parade to try to honor these fallen veterans. And so I respectfully request that as much as possible, that type of activity be curtailed. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a, you know, and you, I think you brought this up before in conversation, and it's a very valid point. But it's, again, it's a fine balance. And this year in particular, I'm sure, because the residents and the parade attendees haven't seen this out because there haven't been many events. I think as much as possible are the key words there, Sally.
Yeah, yeah.
And because if you think about what Sally said, it's so true in terms of, this is a very solemn day. But on the other hand, what... And I'm really one of the ones that does this the most. I go side to side, you know, people are, you know, they want to speak with me. Somebody may have a question, you know. I may hug some people. Pre-pandemic, we used to do that, you know. And it's tough because there was a parade I was at years ago in another adjacent town. I won't mention the town. And I got feedback that the chief elected official didn't look at the people, just walked right down the street. They were waving, and you didn't really socialize. And this was another town I was in, and people recognized me, and I was going side to side because people were calling for me. And so we've got to really, as much as possible, again, Sally, try to figure this out, okay? It's a valid point.
Yeah, I understand that. But I think we could do a better job in balancing. I remember one year, you know, waiting for you for so long, I turned around, and there was a horse's head on my shoulder from the governor's foot guard, and the sergeant of the troop was yelling at me. "You guys got to keep going."
Yeah.
So, you know, and I looked around, and I says, "Uh-oh." You know, I didn't want to get...
So we will...
Do you remember that?
Of course, I do.
We were right in front of the horses.
Right in front of the horses.
I mean, it's better to be in front of the horses than behind the horses. I understand that. But when you're stopping, and the horses don't want to stop, anyway.
Well, I will take the valid point, okay?
I understand that, and I respect your willingness to somehow compromise on that. So my father would be glad that I brought that up, that we should try to acknowledge the solemnness of the day. Campaigning doesn't seem to fit. What do you think, Alan?
No, your point's well taken. No, your point's...
Your point's well taken. The problem, yeah, I think is, I think as you both, as Mike and you both recognize too, it's, on the other hand, you hate not to be polite, you know, because people are happy to be there. It's a beautiful day, you know, in the late spring. And I can think about how, you know, for the years that, you know, and, you know, that Mike and I, you know, when we were involved in Little League, you know, marching with the Little League teams, you know. And Sally, you were, you did girls softball, or? I think a couple of years, I might have done... I coached four years of girls softball. I think I, the girls softball teams might have marched a year or two or whatever as well. But I know I did it for maybe about 10 years with the Little League teams. So, yeah, the kids are so happy and to be out and, you know, it, you know, to them, it was, you know, and it's kind of hard to curtail that joy. I know one of the things that Nick asked to do is that we don't throw candy this year or whatever.
Yeah.
Just for that reason. But that's one of the kids that like, the kids like the most.
I'm not saying not to be happy.
No, I know.
That's what my father used to say. It's nice to, hot dogs and picnics. But the whole element of quasi-campaigning activity doesn't seem to jive well. Certainly, waving to people, you know, what you described in this other town about an elected official just walking down with blinders. You don't want to do that either. We want to say hello and acknowledge people and wave to people. I'm not saying that we should be walking like we're walking in a funeral march. It is a parade. It's just this, you know, Michael, what I'm saying is true. Sometimes there have been tremendous pauses in the parade for campaigning and schmoozing with the public. And I understand that. I'm an elected official as well. But let's try to curtail it a little bit. But I'm not saying we shouldn't be happy. And of course, the little kids are thrilled and waving.
No, no, you know what I'm saying.
They want to wave to their parents. So I wasn't suggesting this be a solemn, you know, nobody could smile at all. I don't know if you're taking it that way. I'm just trying to cut down on these long pauses and active campaigning. It doesn't seem to jive well with the day.
Yeah, I think we should look at this and try to eliminate the pauses and the tie-ups that happen in the brigades. You know, and for me, it's not about campaigning. I'm a social person. I'm with the people all the time pre-pandemic. And you know, ladies and gentlemen, I never forgot, I was nine years old on the corner of Leach Street and Campbell Avenue. My father took me to the West Haven Memorial Day Parade, and the mayor of West Haven at that point came over and talked to us. And I was like, I was so happy as a little boy. And my father was so thrilled that this mayor came over and talked to us. So there's this fine line that we have to sort of balance. But I think we're going to have to focus in on compromising and doing a little bit better.
Especially with the pandemic, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
And even in non-pandemic years, it should be curtailed a bit. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying eliminated. I'm not saying you can't say hello to folks or quick conversations. But these long holdups where the units behind us were getting huffy with us, you know. They often got very upset that we were holding everything up, and then you'd have these huge gaps. So let's just try to do a very reasonable, moderate compromise, please. That's what I suggest, so.
All right.
Okay.
Point well taken.
There we go. Let's, we have to move on to Mr. Feinberg's letter.
All right. Would anyone like to comment on that? I think...
Well, yeah, I had asked that this be put on here. We've already discussed this a bit. Mr. Feinberg wrote us a letter stating that he would still like to see, still feels uncomfortable attending, and could there be some way that communication could be arranged for calling in? I don't know if that is possible with it taking place at the auditorium. But I'm very happy that you put up that, you know, that email address. Could we put that on the website also so people could see?
Yes.
And very soon, because there aren't that many days between today and May 10th. Get that up there ASAP. I know, Val, you have 1,000 things to do tomorrow.
It's okay.
Now you've got 1,001. And just, I think that's somewhat of an accommodation that folks could email questions in. The budget is on the website. You just have to go to the Finance Department, click on Fiscal Year Budgets, and it's right there. So you could review the budget and then email in any questions. But is there any way people could phone in at the auditorium?
I don't think so for this meeting. You know, I understand Mr. Feinberg's point. I've known Jerry for years, and I can understand why he may not want to attend at this juncture. But I'm just very concerned about the high school. There's bad service in there. Val and I talked about, maybe can we do a Zoom? There's very poor service in there. It's sporadic, and, you know, the email is the safest way for people to be acknowledged and for us to answer their questions. The last thing we want is people become disenfranchised because of some sort of technical difficulty at the high school.
Right.
So...
Oh, yes, I agree. Mr. Feinberg has a long history of service at various boards and commissions to this town, so I highly respect his opinions, which is why I requested that it be put, that his letter be referenced under correspondence. So thank you for doing that.
Jerry, thanks for the letter. Thanks for the correspondence. We understand your point, and hopefully the email. If you have questions, I promise you that I will recognize you, your question, and answer the question. All right, so where are we now? Next item.
It's two, number seven. I could do the number seven.
Go right ahead, Sally, you and Bill take it from here.
Number seven, "To consider and act upon a resolution permitting the town to make application to the state in order to undertake a small cities community development program and execute an assistance agreement for same small cities program. Whereas federal monies are available under the Connecticut Small Cities Community Development Black Ram Program administered by the State of Connecticut Department of Housing pursuant to Public Law 93-383 as amended. And whereas pursuant to Chapter 127(c) and Part 6 of Chapter 130 of the Connecticut General Statutes, the Commissioner of Housing is authorized to disburse such federal monies to local municipalities. And whereas it is desirable and in the public interest of the town of North Haven, make application to the state for $1,500,000 in order to undertake a small cities community development program and to execute an assistance agreement, therefore, should one be offered. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Selectmen, (1) that it is cognizant of the conditions and prerequisites for state assistance imposed by Part 6 of Chapter 130 of the Connecticut General Statutes; and (2) that the filing of an application by the town of North Haven in an amount not to exceed $1,500,000 is hereby approved; and that the First Selectment of North Haven is hereby authorized and directed to file such application with the Commissioner of the Department of Housing to provide such additional information to execute such other documents as may be required by the Commissioner to execute an assistance agreement with the State of Connecticut for state financial assistance. If such an agreement is offered, to execute any amendments, rescissions, and revisions thereto, and to act as the authorized representative of the town of North Haven." I will make a motion for that. Is that a resolution? Yes, that resolution as read.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Okay. In the discussion, I just want to let everyone know that this grant, I'd like to thank Richard Lo Presti, Lynn Sadowski, for working together to help us with the details of this. This application, if we receive it, will go to Temple Pines, 555 Pool Road in North Haven for a number of different upgrades to make that building safer and ADA compliant for all of our senior citizens who live there. Right now, there's approximately 79 North Haven seniors that live there. And our goal is to make this building ADA compliant, safe, a new elevator, new alarm systems. Everything that's needed there, this grant should really help us. And this includes some exterior improvements for that facility. And not only is there 79 people approximately that live there, but their families come, their grandchildren. So it's our goal through this grant to make this building as safe as possible for our wonderful residents. So we have a motion, we have a second, any other discussion?
Well, I support this. I'm familiar with the building, and I think it's a... That building can definitely use the improvements. And we should say that prior to this Board of Selectmen Meeting, we did have the required public hearing on this matter.
Yes, we did.
It was not televised, but you can, it could be listened to on the website?
Yes, the recording will be placed on the website.
Right, if you want more information, the First Selectmen described in greater detail what would be done. So we did have the requisite public hearing immediately prior year, too.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
So is the amount the... Are we reasonably certain this amount is the amount we need for the improvements?
Well, you know, it...
Or it's hard to tell?
It's hard to tell, you know, but we think it's going to cover a great deal of what I mentioned at the public hearing, at least some of the items I mentioned tonight, so. But this is a positive thing, ladies and gentlemen. And we've been trying to really improve this facility. As I mentioned in the hearing, the public meeting earlier, we've got a series of grants. We made eight town hall ADA compliant in 2011, Parkside Manor, 2017, I think it was, 2017, and, you know, and the Senior Citizens Center in 2009. So our goal is to upgrade these facilities, and we're told there's monies out there that we can apply for. So we have a motion and a second. I'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, very good. Okay, next item?
Uh, next item is, uh, item number eight on the agenda, uh, consideration and possible action on the proposed sale by the town of real property on Selat Street consisting of approximately three thousand two hundred and thirteen square feet to Christopher Policchio for the sum of nine thousand six hundred dollars. Uh, resolve that pursuant to section four oh six C of the Town Charter, the proposed sale of real property owned by the town on Selat Street is more particularly described in the proposed quitclaim deed and purchase and sale agreement to Christopher Policchio with a sum of nine thousand six hundred dollars is approved on the terms set forth in the proposed quitclaim deed and purchase and sale agreement. The first selectman is authorized to execute the purchase and sale agreement, quitclaim deed and such other necessary documents to effectuate the sale of the subject property.
All right, so I'll ask for a motion and a second, then in discussion, I'll explain what this is all about. So we have a motion to accept.
I've made a motion to, um, uh, to, to, um, to do this.
So a motion to approve the resolution is read?
Yes.
Okay, I will second it, subject to a couple of questions I have, but I'll wait for your description.
So this is part of an economic development project of mine. And the president and owner of the company, Chris Policchio, is a wonderful man. He happens to be a North Haven resident and he wants to bring his business into North Haven. This is a property that was owned by Louis Saint George and this section of Selat Street is really of no use and no value to the town. Chris has agreed to purchase it. We did a blue book appraisal from Emorio Associates. They came up with the valuation of nine thousand six hundred dollars. It's really a, a small sliver. And it's needed for Chris to bring his business to North Haven. This is a new and unique business for our town. It's a, uh, it's called Enviro Mobile Blasting. It's an ecologically friendly system where if you need, as an example, a pressure-treated lumber deck, as an example, blasted, that's what we, that, one of the many, many things that Chris can do. His business has application to home, residential, commercial, auto, marine, boats, anything that needs to be cleaned and, uh, removal of rust, this business can do it. And this is an area, it's about three blocks south of Manoise Avenue. It's west of Quinnipiac Avenue. It's in an area that's about seventy-five plus percent of, of commercial, retail, gas stations, industrial buildings. And it's, uh, it's a good thing for the town of North Haven. And we do get the nine thousand six hundred hours, but, um, more importantly than that, we bring a new business to town.
Yeah, I, I have a few questions. Um, first, I've lived in North Haven for sixty-four years and I did not know where Selat Street was. So I got out my map and I found it and I went there today and, um, I, it's a very short street. There's a couple of houses there and some businesses. Um, this is, uh, just, um, thirty-two hundred square feet. Uh, is it a part of other land that the town owns? Are we, okay, so this is all that we own there on that street? Is this thirty-two hundred?
But he's actually, um, he needed to purchase this to purchase the property from the Saint George.
This is what I'm going to say, my next question was, does he own or is he intending to own other property? Because you can't do much on thirty-two hundred square feet. So he wants this as an addition to other property he owns or is expected to own.
From the, from the owner of it, Louis.
Of other property?
Yes.
Yeah, I got you, okay, that, so, um, that clears that up. Um, I did have a little, uh, bit of a question about the wording of the resolution itself. First of all, it, um, it specifically authorizes the first selectman to sign the purchase and sale agreement and the quitclaim deed. But the, um, purchase and sale agreement in the packet is designed to be signed by Edwitt Swinkowski, Director of Finance. So should it, should we amend the resolution to say the first selectman and/or his agent? Because, you know, and I'm, I'm, I don't know why Ed is signing this because we've done open space contracts and they're always signed by you. The resolution says it's going to be signed by you, but the agreement is set up to be signed by Ed. So I don't know whether we need to amend it for that reason. It's, uh, technical as it may be, but, you know, I can't help myself. I'm, I'm a lawyer, we, we look at everything under a microscope. And the other, the other issue I had is the resolution says that we are approving the terms set forth in the quitclaim deed and purchase and sale agreement. Well, I've, I've read the entire ten-page, um, uh, purchase and sale agreement. Um, and I, I don't have any problem with the, the terms, but the quitclaim, proposed quitclaim deed is not attached. So it's hard for me to feel comfortable, ah, okay. Wait, look, what just? I felt uncomfortable approving a resolution that says I approve of the quitclaim deed when I haven't seen it because sometimes quitclaim deeds, um, as I remember from open space, uh, transactions have some weird covenants in it, uh, so.
We'll give you a few minutes.
Now that I'm looking at this, um, uh.
Take, take your time.
Yeah, no, I, I, I can already tell that it doesn't have any, um, subject to's or conditions or covenants or anything like that. I just didn't want to say yes to something that I hadn't looked at. So I've looked at it, and again, this is, the, Ed Swinkowski is Director of Finance, can sign, oh, can convey property on behalf of the town and not you? You don't have to do it?
Well, once we approve it, okay, we're the body.
Yeah, yeah, I know, there's this.
You, you know, I do have a desig, he is my designate.
The charter says we have to sell.
So he technically can sign it, uh, could sign it. But I think to your point, we should amend the resolution to include the first selectman or his designee.
Then I, I would, yeah, e- e- either, we either have to change the documents or change the resolution so that they match the documents.
So why don't we, uh, establish a motion to amend that, to include that language?
I will make a motion that we amend the resolution read by the second selectman to include that the first selectman and/or his designee is authorized.
Yes.
Et cetera, et cetera. So I will make that motion.
Very good.
I'll, I'll second Sally's motion.
And I agree with the motion and the second, and I will support it. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you for that, Sally.
Yeah, and the only other thing, eighteen Church Street is the Town Hall, not the Town Hall Annex. The Annex on Lind, on Lindley Street, but that's.
You know, this, that's a, that is another thing I've noticed, even in the archives here, there's a lot of references to Town Hall Annex and that shouldn't be.
Yeah.
It's almost like a, a page from the past, a termin, a terminology from the past.
Well, we have an annex, which is, um, on Lindley Street, where engineering and public works is, where I went to school, many, many, about a hundred years ago. Uh, but, you know, this is the Town Hall at eighteen Church Street. The Town Hall Annex is at Lindley, so I don't why, know why they called it that. But, you know, that's minor, I'm not going to, uh, so, uh, I had, there was a motion to approve the resolution, which we've amended. And I said I was seconding it and now that you've answered my questions and we've amended it to include, uh, and/or his agent, I will, um, second it again.
All right, so, uh, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Sally.
Okay.
Sally, would you like to take number ten?
Sure, I'll do the first one.
Okay.
Um, I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Earl Stamp, formerly of two ninety-two Upper State Street from the Water Pollution Control Authority, term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
All right, in the discussion, I'd like to thank Earl Stamp for his faithful service to the WPCA. And Earl, uh, thank you. Uh, you and Mary Lou have been part of the fabric of this community for many, many years. So I thank you for your service and we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next.
The, uh, next resignation is of Joseph, I'll make a motion regarding the resignation of Joseph M. Solomon, uh, thirty-seven Jennifer Drive from the Quinnipiac Valley Health District Board of Directors, term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All right, in the discussion, Joe already sits on the Board of Education, Joe Salamini, and also the planning and zoning, so, uh, with his career as young family, we certainly understand. So we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next.
I will move for the resignation of Danielle Morphy, one ninety-four Clintonville Lane from the Board of Assessment Appeals, term to expire November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Um, I'll second.
All right, Danielle, I thank you for your service on this Board of Assessment Appeals. Thank you very much and we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, but I do have a comment. Um, Board of Assessment Appeals is an elected position?
Yes.
And so pursuant to two oh five A of the charter, we have to fill it, we, the Board of Selectmen, we have to fill it within six, sixty days, correct?
Right, yes.
And according to two oh five B, uh, because it is an elected position, we have to fill it with an individual from the same political party. Am I understanding the charter correctly on this?
Yes, you're absolutely right. So we're gonna, we're gonna leave it up to you, Sally, to come to us with a recommendation.
All righty, I will do what I have to do to get that to you.
Okay.
Um, and I think it's Bill's turn on the next.
Um, I'll motion, um, the appointment of Thomas Muir, uh, twenty-three Clark Avenue to the Water Pollution Control Authority to fill the unexpired term of Earl Stamp, term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
I'll second.
In the discussion, I'd like to thank Tom for, for stepping up and, and being willing to sit on this WPCA. You know, Tom's been part of this community for many, many years, played hockey for North Haven back in the seventies. He's a member of our fire police, so thank you, Tom, and I endorse this a hundred percent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'll make a motion for the appointment of Delil, Delilah Dominguez. I believe there's, it's spelled wrong, it's, ends with a Z, not an S. Um, appointment of Delilah Dominguez, LCSWPA dash C, twelve ninety-eight Hartford Turnpike, apartment ten G, to the Commission on Aging to fill the unexpired term of Alan Fontana, term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. So I will move for Delilah's appointment. I've reviewed her very impressive resume and I think she would be a, a great attribute to the very important Commission on Aging. So I wholeheartedly move for this appointment with that name spelling noted, please.
Second, Bill.
Yeah, and I also read her, um, resume and it, she's definitely very well qualified to, yeah, um, uh, to do the, uh, to, for the appointment and, um, you know, it's great that she's willing to do that. And I think as Sally mentioned, I think we just need to correct, you know, the, the last letter on the spelling of her name.
All right, so we'll do that. Delilah, thank you very much, uh, a very impressive resume. We look forward to having you on, uh, this commission. You've got a great chairwoman, Claudia Giuletti, who I work very closely with, so, uh, welcome aboard. We'll call for this vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, motion, um, the, um, the appointment of J. Stacy Yarborough, twelve Susan Lane to the Quinnipiac Valley Health District Board of Directors to fill the unexpired term of Joseph M. Salamini, term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Um, before I second this, I, I just want to share a couple of concerns about this appointment, uh, with the board. You know, I was reviewing, um, Mr. Salome's, uh, letter, uh, of resignation and he mentioned that, uh, this, uh, Quinnipiac Valley Health District, um, uh, he was stepping down because he felt he couldn't fully participate in all their meetings and committee sessions and that, uh, the town really needed someone who could fully participate. Um, now, this is nothing against Stacy is certainly very well qualified, our town clerk, but I do, um, remember her, uh, uh, very regularly at budget workshops. For example, um, discussing, especially, um, discussing the challenges of being both the town clerk and tax collector, which is quite unusual. I think North Haven is one of just a handful municipalities that has one person serving both roles. And she would very often, uh, stre, uh, stress the challenges of being both, especially when justifying, uh, her yearly pay increases. Uh, and so, and I've also heard you, Mike, especially in the past year, um, but prior to, to that, emphasizing how hard she works and that she wo- works late almost every night. Um, and that, you know, as town clerk, she must also attend all town meetings. So my question is, uh, you know, and I did try to call Mr. Salome, but couldn't get through to him today to ask him how often they meet and when do they meet? Is it during the workday, is it at night? I don't, I don't really know. So I'm just wondering, uh, based on Stacy's description of how busy she is and how late she works at night and her town meeting commitments, does she have time, do you feel, to, to fulfill this, this position? Do you, can you respect my, my asking that?
But those are quarterly meetings, they're not monthly meetings.
Okay, well, I see, like, I tried to find out.
Right.
How, how, uh, regularly they work.
Right.
Um, I'm, I don't really know, I, I know what the Quinnipiac Valley Health District does, but I don't know much about the inner workings of the, the Board of Directors. So they meet quarterly.
They, they meet quarterly.
Okay.
So, look, Stacy, uh, uh, can definitely do it. I have tremendous confidence in her ability to multitask. And, you know, she'll be the first to tell us if she feels the same way Joe does. But this is a board, ladies and gentlemen, that we've had a tough time getting people on. And Stacy's got a lot of expertise. She's a very smart woman. She's, uh, got a great legal background and I think she would add a lot to this, uh, this particular board. So she feels she can do it. I told her I would support her and, uh, if she feels that she can't do it, she'll be the first one to come to us.
My questions were not, I mean, having anything to do with her, her, her personal qualifications at all. It was simply just remembering her descriptions of how busy she is. Uh, but now, and again, I did make an effort, a good faith effort, to learn a bit more about how often they met and couldn't do it. So, um, if you feel comfortable, uh, and as you said, you, you're confident that if it is too much, because she, in her resume, she has other responsibilities in the town as well, and some safety committee and whatnot. So you, if you feel confident that if it is too much, she'll let you know, then I will second this appointment.
Very good, okay. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, any other discussion? Um, hearing none, uh, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, very good. So we're on item number eleven.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the property tax refunds listed in the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Item number twelve, William.
Um, first one is a bond release, uh, number P zero eight dash two zero, uh, thirty-nine A Upper State Street. The amount of the original bond is fifteen thousand dollars. The current balance of the bond is fifteen thousand. Uh, we, um, the motion is to release in its entirety with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'll second.
All right, motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Yes, and regarding P twenty dash oh eight, one fifty-eight Washington Avenue, amount of original bond, seventy-five hundred dollars, current balance of bond, seven hundred, uh, seven thousand, excuse me, seven thousand five hundred was the original bond. The current balance is seven thousand five hundred. I'll make a motion to release it in its entirety with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you Sally and Bill, uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We're at item number thirteen, the next meeting of our Board of Selectmen is Thursday, June third, here at seven PM at Memorial Town Hall. Thank you very much for joining us tonight, ladies and gentlemen. And now we're at the last item of the agenda, item number fourteen. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right.
I'll, um, second and see everybody at the, uh, annual budget town meeting on the tenth.
We'll see everybody on the tenth and I'll, uh, also, we'll call for the vote on adjournment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Have a wonderful evening.
Bye.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven.